Kramer?
Yes.
Reitner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
In front of you, you can see from back there, is this green folder. This green folder is what we call our standing operating procedures for the summary police department. There's nothing new about this, it's been here since the beginning of time. History in the city of Sunbury has always been that every chief, I don't care if we go from McCandless up to David, probably 12 people, has always been that any time they make a change to an operating procedure or a rule or regulation, it always gets posted on the bulletin board down there for 10 days, maybe they have any problem with it, they tell the chief they have a problem with it, if not, all that gives us into effect. A couple of years ago, they turned it around, and when we have things like this, now the city council approves them. We are here tonight because this is an ongoing effect, you know, we've been ongoing all year long with the police department and the contract, back and forth and things like that, it's narrowed down to two things that have to get. But my point is, there is nowhere, this has nothing to do with the contract, this is two separate issues. I've asked the police department more than once to list, it was their, the verbal thing to me was, we have six or eight that we don't agree with, I said, just put it in writing, get it back to us so we can approve the rest of them. They have a grievance procedure in the contract, that if there's anything that they don't agree with, they can file a grievance on that. I no longer want to sit and wait on this, we want to get, we're getting near the end of the year, the contract final wording, they guarantee we'll be here by the end of the year, but tonight, what I want to do is pass by council, per the law in the last two or three years.
Pass it.
We will pass this by council, that these are the standing operating procedures. These are written by Chief Miller, but it's, all comes from the Pennsylvania Chiefs Association. Everybody in the state of Pennsylvania writes all their stuff from the Pennsylvania Chiefs Association, that's where the changes are made, that's where everybody implements in their own rules and regulations. So there's nothing secret, there's nothing here that every police officer hasn't read and seen 100 times over, and if there is one thing they agree on, they can file a grievance with us tomorrow if they want to. So, I'm standing, sitting in front of you, talking about, this is all of them, as you can see, this is why we hired Chief Miller, this is the first thing he got done, and he didn't do it overnight. There's a lot of stuff in there, but that pretty much tells a person how to make an arrest, and what procedures to do time after time, that's what protects a city summary from lawsuits, that's what protects our police department, the people sitting up here, and the citizens, period, for lawsuits, that's what it's all about. So everything is updated, everything is in there, and I'm going to make a motion to council that we pass the standing operating procedures for the Sunbury Police Department. Any questions, you guys have any questions?
Persing?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Reitner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Eister?
Okay. Anything? Okay. First reading, 2018 budget ordinance. Beth?
Well, we had a, we came up, we had a meeting today, we had a collaboration with some public people that were able to attend the meeting, and we came up with the three mil tax increase in order to balance the budget. We're going to, going to make a motion that we pass this on the first reading, and then we have until the first reading, to the first meeting in December, to adjust this budget hopefully downward, so we don't have to increase the taxes three mils.
Second.
The name of your folders, I put the three mils does to everybody on council, myself, two people come along, Kurt, and Chris, and so, and I took a small business, a medium business, and a large business, which is going to affect them too, the LHA increase. So I'm going to make a statement, it's going to go across the board.
Does annual prices? Annual?
That's it, yeah, that's your city county. Um, like Beth said, this is this, if you get the pass, and you have three days to adjust it anyway. Let's have that.
So we'll probably get to you sometime soon, now in December.
Right.
Okay, we have a...
I'm ready to push.
Do you have a second?
Yep. Kramer?
Yes.
Reitner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Eister? Persing?
Yes. Open tax anticipation bids, Beth?
Yes.
No, I'm sorry, you have taxes.
The first thing is this ordinance, we have to pass the ordinance to be able to raise the taxes, and that's, the general revenue will be 28 mils, the recreation will be .20, the library will be .025, and the net reduction will be .20. And we have to pass this resolution in order to lower the taxes.
You have a 400?
Second?
Reitner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Eister? Persing?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Now, the tax anticipation bids, Beth?
We have three bills on this, one is Swineford National Bank, the principal amount is $250,000. We borrowed this money at the beginning of revenue year to get us through until the taxes come, start coming in in March. 66% on 38, they were, that's 2.5%, currently 2.63, as of 11/8/17.
Did that adjust more?
Yeah.
Who's that now?
Ceiling of 5%, that's why.
It's my first. You said it was a 5% ceiling?
Yeah. Four is 2.25, and ceiling of five. The next one is West Milton Bank. The, it's another one for $250,000. The interest rate is 2.26, tax-free rate, and in the event that the law is determined at any point, it's turned not to be taxed, the interest rate will reset to 3.19, interest counter will run 365 days a year, there will be fees of $500, for documentation and wireless counsel. And this is, all the bids we've made, except for this one from Nori National Bank.
Excuse me, Beth, the West Milton Bank, is that a fixed rate, or is that variable? Is it fixed?
Yeah, it's fixed, at 2.26.
Okay. 2.26, $500.
And the other thing with these is, we have to pay it back at the end of the calendar year, it has to be paid back by December 31st, 2018. The other one is for Nori National Bank, it's a secured interest tax revenue stream of the city, evidenced by filing this new CCI financial statement, a line of credit of $250,000, fixed rate at 1.15% for 12 months, no fees.
I'll check on Kramer.
Yes. So I make a motion that we turn these over to Brian, to make sure they're all legal, and how you will go with the others, which we give them.
Do you have a first and second on legal review to accept Northumberland National? That's a little bit.
Henry?
Yes.
Eister? Persing?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Reitner?
Uh, free parking on metered streets, November 24th to January the 2nd. I'll make a motion if you do that, do you have a second?
Eister?
This is the yearly thing that we do.
Persing?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Reitner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Norfolk Southern, this is what we're going to talk about. I was looking back through some of the minutes today, and looking back into the, actually late 90s and 2000s, about the project that the city worked together with, with private businesses, things like the Gold's Hardware, the parking lot combination, and we swapped land for things, we worked with them, and Burger King, and the 7-Eleven, soon-to-be, and things like that, so, we've been doing things like this for a long time, and it's opportunities, trying to create opportunities for employment, try to create opportunities for growth in our businesses, and allow that. So what I'm doing, I want to just go through this, this project that I've worked about a year on, to see if we get any support for it, and that's, that's how we're going to do this, as simple as that. But the goal of the City of Sunbury Norfolk Southern Community Blight Removal Safety Project, that site project is to address safety concerns, eliminate blighted areas, while improving the opportunities for values throughout our neighborhoods. This is, comes down to four, four sections, three closures we're going to talk about. First closure is Lyndon Street and Third Street closure, Norfolk Southern, Pendot will close crossing, modify all curving, use right-of-way to widen exit alley from Lyndon Street to Spruce Street, that's how you can get out, replace hedges where fencing currently is, remove any possibility of a collision point, which is what makes it safe, we're eliminating a crossover, and there's no expense to City of Sunbury, that all gets paid by Pendot, and also, you all are fortunate to have pictures in your, in your program. Section two is South Third Street and Church Street closure, Norfolk Southern will close crossing and modify all curving, Norfolk Southern will donate Pennsylvania Railroad County-owned lot, city, or city lot, 04901, 4,000, to the city, this lot runs parallel with the race, or the rail tracks between Church and Penn Street. We would actually hook up Church and Penn Street, would now be a big U, and they would pay for that. Pendot will build a road that will connect Church Street to Penn Street at their cost. Again, no, no cost to the City of Sunbury. Again, you have pictures in there of how that would go, with the, with the crossing, but the curbs are pictured, take the crossing out, put the curve in there right now. Three or four, Third and Ray Streets, Norfolk Southern, no abandoned real estate, milepost BR 258, it's marked, this is property right now, if you walk, if you walk up there, you'll probably see, I'm going to guess, 12, 15 abandoned cars, some of them have registration, some of them don't, three or four boats, it's pretty much a junkyard up there, and I know we fought this on and off, I know Jim's been involved, and we contacted Railroad, I don't know how many times, and this is also the area where, if you remember back on June 26th, there was people that came to this council meeting looking for parking in that area. So by this, by Norfolk Southern giving us that land of 1.9 acres, we could create anything one or two in that neighborhood, help them, and again, this is at no cost to the City of Sunbury. Again, you have pictures of that property that's in there also.
That's not closing Ray Street.
That's right, there's no Ray Street, no. That's just, this is just ground they want to give us for free, this has not, this is just something we negotiated. Part of three also is the southeast side, if you go down where Chest, Third and Cheston is, Third and Cheston is where they have the, where we use it for overflow park, we used to have, it used to be filled all the time when McCann was downtown, McCann is no longer downtown, we only average about six or eight cars on that right now, we've been paying $2,700 a year on that for, for rental, and they will give us that property with the other property, and drop to 2,700, so again, that's for free, that would be nothing involved in that. The only, the main thing about that, that doesn't really affect us right now, that section, when you think about it, that's, as soon as you go to the tracks that are right-hand side there, but if you would ever want to extend Raspberry Avenue to Fourth, you would need that section of ground to go in between there, and that's pretty much going to be a project that, like a blockman project in the future. Now, the last section is Woodland Avenue, nor Third Street closure, Norfolk Southern will close a crossing, modify all curving, City of Sunbury will redesign the parking lot behind Packer House to allow bus parking and future development. You have to think, if you go, if you think of the, and I know Ms. Garmen was here speaking, if you think of her property, and you walk out the back door, that parking lot we have in there is, is nothing but a blighted area, nobody uses it, the lighting doesn't work on it, it has to be redone, it has to be redesigned, and again, there's probably, what is it, medical building there, there's, there's other future, the back of the Chinese restaurant, that type stuff, so, it's still in the business district, the intent of this project would be to improve traffic flow and increase direct economic impact, it would be a place that we could nurture future investment in that area, make it safer, right now, people don't want to walk up through there because it's, it's just not lit, it's just not lit. Norfolk Southern would close the railroad crossing, which creates another safety area in the downtown business district, City would redesign the entire city parking lot that was located behind the Packer House and Great Wall Restaurant, this also would be the perfect location, the ideal location, and my thought would be that we put the police station in that parking lot, there's a, there's a property that's for sale right in that area, either the property for sale, the council will have to look at the two options, and see what they think would be better, but if you, if you look at that, at that parking area, and you put that police department in the back of that, from there all the way up to Third Street, is all well-lit parking, who's not going to want to park there, nobody will want to park across the street on the other side, now you have backdoor access, again, you can walk out of your car, 10 steps into the Great Wall, or into the back of the Packer House, or if something comes up in the, in the old-dyed hotel. So the concept of this is, is what it boils down to, is a way to, to read, to fix an area and create economic development in an area by improvement in the property by itself. And you also, everybody has a sign in the, you know, picture of that overhead, too. So what it boils down to, wrapping it up, is it's the Removal Safety Project, it's estimated, I've got from Pendot, told me that it's a $4 million project, it'll probably take place in the end of 18 or 19, they're coming through, they're going to do all the closings, they're going to do all the railroad things, no matter what happens. What it boils down to, in a recap, is the city would get $200,000 of unattached money, I mean, that's $200,000 in cash, it comes into the city with, with no rules, you have to use it for this, you have to use it for that, my, my proposal is that $200,000 goes right into that area, that fix that parking lot, and the, and the brand-new police station, or the remodeled police station, or whatever they come up with, but that's $200,000, the offer was two closings for $100,000, and all three of the closings for $200,000, eliminates three danger of building crossings that would be eliminated, like I said, a new street would be built at no cost to city taxpayers, two acres of blighted ground to be improved in future projects for free, elimination of lease agreements for overflow parking, that's the $2,700 that we're paying annually, and new economic development within our downtown area for any future growth, and again, that's the parking lot, the police station, it'd be nice to save, to fix that parking lot, if you're ever going to promote, and we've tried for years, promote the Human Services Building on Fourth and Market, that's the only place, if you ever would be able to promote that, that's the only place you could create any parking that would be reasonable within the length of that building to promote it. So you hate to lose any of the parking in the back, just for that reason, because again, I don't know if that's ever going to come about, but lots of people looked at it, we have not been successful, and hopefully the owner in the future will be successful with it, but that, that's a huge undertaking, but again, that is his only aspect to, to say, well, you can put a business in here because here is where the parking is, and realistically, if you walk out the back of that Human Services, walk around the corner, you probably don't even have 50 yards till you get to that parking lot, right now, nobody uses that parking lot. So again, the bottom line, the city costs nothing to improve properties, and I just have a link before you, if anybody wants to make a second to talk about, if nobody wants to make a second, then it's a dead issue, we move on.
I still stand on my original, I'm not going forward, I'm against it, so, no matter what we do, is not going to change my vote.
I didn't answer that, I asked, does anybody want to make a second?
A lot of issues, Woodland Avenue for transportation, to and from businesses we work at, for hauling things for the situation, and logical, it's trying to create a real headache for us.
David, I think we should take one more time just to read over this, and study this, I've got a couple of things I'm going to go look at.
All right, we'll do no second, it's a dead issue tonight. Okay, pay, approval of pay-in voices.
Right now, we have $142,000, $35 in general fund expenses, and $3,000, $18, $18 in vehicle fuel, I'd like to make a motion that we pay these bills.
If those on council are smart.
Kramer?
Yes.
Reitner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Eister? Persing?
Tax exoneration, Beth?
There's 17 people on the list for tax exoneration, one paid elsewhere, one's deceased, and all the rest are due to pick. Make a motion that we can honor these.
Reitner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Eister?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Shippman already talked, nuisance property task force, Rick?
Right after Chief Miller came to town, this is down, we did some talking about some things we were looking to do, to better the city, and the event that happened last week, kind of precipitated this coming a little bit quicker than what we anticipated happening, but beginning of the year, we're going to form a nuisance property task force, to work on situations that are going on within the city, whether it's blighted property, the issue that happened up on Seventh Street this past week, and I come from all different angles, and we're actively aggressive in dealing with these nuisance properties. Do you have anything to say, Chief?
No, other than, one of the things I saw when I got here was, the codes department and the police department aren't working as well together as we probably should, the codes department has the, the property maintenance code at their disposal, and I feel like we could provide a better public safety service by working together, using the property maintenance code, and just by meeting on a, on a regular basis and passing information, that way, nobody knows where, where these properties are that are a problem, more than the people who live in those neighborhoods, so, the, the idea behind a nuisance property task force is to have, so to speak, eyes and ears out there, kind of looking out for us, and then reporting, and then we act upon the information, it's just a, a better, more efficient way to communicate information, and to be able to go in and, and attack some of these issues that we see, you know, using all available resources, and the fact that codes has tools that we don't have as police, by combining and working together and communicating, we just believe it's going to help us provide a better service to the people living in some of these neighborhoods around these blighted properties, and the idea is not to, not to go in and pick on people, but if we truly have a problem in an area, we want to be able to go in and address the problems.
So Chief, is anybody actively doing drug work?
Yes. Yes, Captain Bennet works with the FBI Safe Streets Task Force out of Williamsport, there's, there's been a lot of ongoing drug investigations in the city of Sunbury, obviously, you don't, people don't know about everything that's going on, but, but we, we have, the federal government, the FBI is here in Sunbury, working drug cases very actively, as long as, as well as the state police, and then we also have, you know, some of our younger, more aggressive guys are doing street-level interdiction-type work, which is, you know, done from a, from the police car, versus undercover narcotics running experiments and things like that, so, there is a lot of drug investigations going on, it's just, you don't hear about a lot of them, a lot of them are very high-level investigations, so, sometimes those investigations take a little bit longer, but when indictments come down, you'll see a lot of people being arrested at one time versus, you know, a few here.
Well, just an FYI kind of thing, in my neighborhood, a house right next to me, that was an issue, and apparently still is, that people come up Edison Avenue, and all of a sudden go across the parking lot, and they're coming in the back door.
I'll get with you after, so you can give me the address, you want to announce it, and then, see what you do.
Okay, we're going to hold that chamber of commerce essay winner, see if I can get her here in the next meeting. I do want to mention that the UPMC, I don't know if any of you got the opportunity to be up at their dedication, I guess what you call it, they raised their flag up there, but I, I do want to, I do want to thank, and he's not here, but I want to thank Jesse Woodring, I'm not exactly sure what procedure he had, but I know he was the president up there, that board director, or chairman of that board directors for a lot of years, I know he was on that board, and I'm sure he had something to do with the negotiations to get the Pittsburgh outfit in in Sunbury. My biggest fear was that that building was going to sit up there empty for the next 50 years, I'm telling you, it's going to be a huge impact, you won't see it, it won't be that long, you'll see the big impact, you know, the, the days, the days are over, where Saturday afternoon, you break a leg, and they, they don't know where to take it because they don't know where the doctors are, the doctors will be in Sunbury, people will be in Sunbury, this will be a hospital that people will want to go to, and I, and I, and I'm telling you, it's going to make a major impact in our community down the road, it's great that we're able, and the reason I want to thank Jesse, is I know he had something to do with negotiations, I know he was involved in that, and it might even be somebody else in this room that's on that committee, I don't know, if you are, I'm sorry, but the, the committee that was running the hospital at the end when it, when this took place, I want to thank them all, if you know any of them, thank them also, it's a huge difference, I'm telling you, it's going to be, you know, these, this is a big organization, this is 10 times the size of Bay Harbor, it's big, and it's going to, they took Muncie Hospital, the only reason I know Muncie, I've talked to someone I know up there, that they turned that into like an eye specialist-type thing, but pretty much Williamsport's the headquarters for the Pittsburgh Medical Center outfit, and that's their headquarters, and then at each hospital, I don't know if each hospital's going to be specialized in things, or how that works out, but clearly, you know, with the money that was invested in with the, you know, in this hospital, in the past years, 24 million was put in there, I guess that was only 10, 15 years ago, you know, as far as the ER, that they're going, but we all know that the problems that we've had up there, and I'm, I'm, I'm just telling you, it's going to be a major impact for the city, so if you, if you're ever up that way, or see somebody walking around with a purple shirt and all that, I want to thank them for coming, because it's going to definitely help the city. Want to mention the Christmas lights, the Christmas lights, I think, are 90% up there. Just about ready, it seemed like every time they wanted to have help from the prisoners, and this is not the county prisoners anymore, this is the stuff that we've lost since the county prisoner's no longer in the city, but I did want to mention that the only organization that volunteered to help, and that was the YMCA, I guess the administration, came down and decorated the gazebo, it's in the middle of the park, I do want to thank Terry sitting beside him, and my wife isn't here, but the other day I woke up, and she was ironing ribbons, and I said, what are you ironing ribbons for, and we're going to put them in the, out in the gazebo, or somewhere in the park, so, you know, and you have Cheryl, and the guys for the city that work in between the raindrops, they want to hang something that was pouring down raining, but I, I only tell you this, it was the Cold Township Work Program where we got the visitor, the visitor, the prisoners from the health, they visit, they went, they went, they came back and visited the next day, too.
Yeah, they were happy to be here.
And we're fortunate to be able to do that without them, I don't know how we'd have any Christmas decorations, so keep that in the back of your mind, maybe next year, you can, somebody can give a day or two to help put some of these up, the city, I, most people always tell me that the city is decorated fine, it looks nice, and we take great pride, and we raise some money, we put some money in, and we try to update, and I think everybody's going to like the new Christmas tree, that huge Christmas tree we have in the back, that's 24, 30 feet, somewhere in that range.
24, 4-foot star.
Yep, that's a big one, it's, so, I guess we're like little kids some, some point in time, but we, you know, that's what people talk about the city, the entrance in and out of the city, and for the holiday season, ours will be second to none.
We can keep making it bigger.
Yeah, you could, that's right.
Not on it, I don't.
They said you could add, you could always add to that thing and raise it, huh?
Yes, we can.
And we'll have to have blinkers on for the helicopters. So any audience comment, anything particular? Mark?
Yep. My name's Mark Wahlberg, and I mainly came down to see about, the city had gone to court against changing the property on Second and Arch Street, from, when this, well, a quick history for people that know, the city was auctioned off approximately 10 years ago, the house on the corner of Parch and Second, at that time, which we have the microfilm now from the newspaper, it was public notice that it couldn't be converted into multi-unit apartments, so, the people that acquired it took the city to court about, I guess, a month and a half ago, and they judge overturned, and said that they couldn't make it into multiple unit apartments, so, I asked the city to, you know, to fight that, take it back to court, because the, when it was sold, it was not going to be turned into housing, we have copy of the microfilm, the auctioneer is still, lives here, and my wife attended, with all the neighbors in the neighborhood there are all against it, and basically, if you're going to let that ordinance, that, about the parking, if you're going to let one open the door to one, you might as well open the door to all of them, so, you know, it doesn't meet the ordinance, the judge made the ruling, but it was sold, and hopefully you guys could find your original file besides the microfilm, which is the published thing that did say it was, went from cycle foundation, donated to the city, the city auctioned it off, if I'm not mistaken, but it said right there that it could not be turned into apartments, and there's, you know, not adequate parking, and I think it went first before the city zoning board, who agreed that it couldn't be converted, and then it went to court, if I'm not mistaken, is that right? So, you know, I, I, I think you need to...
You know, the city council meeting in between that.
What?
And we're here, too. There was a city council meeting in between, zoning board, the city council, and then it went to court.
Right, but the bottom line is, is the laws were made to protect from multi-units without enough parking, and, I mean, I have a vested interest in Arch Street, which is, I've been trying to have it turn around, I sold one house there to someone who completely redid it, and moved in as a residential, and basically, it, it was sold under the pretenses that it couldn't be converted, so, I think the city needs to put it split down and appeal this, and fight it 100%, because I buy extra lots, and have them torn down when I need extra parking, to comply, and a lot of other people to comply, they add parking, but then why? And a lot of other people to comply, they add parking, but then why should someone get around it, especially when when you bought it knowing, going in when you raised your hand that the usage was denied for apartment complexes?
Just let me throw something here, because I, you and I talked about this, and I talked to the planning commission themselves about, I wasn't at the original hearing before we had our hearing. But pretty much what it boils down to, and I have no problem, we'll bring this up again with council for before the next meeting for you, see if they want to do. But the decision was based on the fact that what I tried to find out what that would cost us to appeal that, and they were talking about an eight thousand to fifteen thousand dollars. And that's why we said, well, we're going to drop the thing. But I agree with everything you're saying, I don't even understand how it was overturned. Clearly, all that, what you said is true, it happened and the judge sat right there and said, I don't care, here's what we're going to do. So what we'll do is we'll bring it back to council, I mean, you you presented, we'll take a look at it and give you another answer in the next meeting.
Then I have another question for you. They had on on Market Street here, they have an apartment, which is listed as one apartment. And I assume one apartment doesn't mean like twenty eight residents in one apartment? So it was leased to Furman's, to Meadows, Vermontos or Furman's? So my question is, is if if everyone isn't related in some way as a family, doesn't our guidelines say that they have to be related to the family to have multiple? In other words, if there's no ordinance, the square footage is supposedly correct, I guess if you sleep on the floor and throw, you know, but there was, if you go to the code office, sign a Freedom of Information Act. And you and you open the file, you'll see twenty seven driver's licenses of people that were living in that apartment that's only listed as one apartment. So.
Have you brought this to code office or did you just bring it tonight?
Excuse me? Oh, I mean, I looked at the file, I signed the thing. Ask Mike, he's sitting there, how many were in there? How many what? How many residents?
I don't know, top of my head, look, I'm sorry.
Would you agree it's in the twenties? I mean, we could go get the file, the point is, the point is, are we running, if that, see, everything that I fight for to make the city right, that I put my money behind, it nothing gets, it all backfires, okay? So you want to bring back Market Street, so you get one apartment and you put twenty seven people sleeping in there, and you call it, it has enough square footage, okay? But they're not relatives, I think there might be something in the code that says that people have to at least be your relative or something. So Furman's puts their migrant workers in one apartment, twenty seven of them. I mean, if the file hasn't been messed with, you'll see there's driver's licenses, photos stacked high. So I mean, so why don't I just make my houses that I have now flop houses and bring everybody in too? At least to a company, because the tenant is not the people living there, it's the it's the company. So that would be like, any company name can come and rent your apartment and fill it full of all their employees.
And part of that was, is part of what we were addressing a little earlier in the code revisions.
Yeah.
So part of the house and permit application going forward, it won't just be listing on the application the tenant or the the lease.